Please join me in this Fledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Will the city clerk please take role?
Davis Reinhardt.
Here.
Wanda Sang.
Here.
Joyce J.
Here.
Tracy Langworthy.
Here.
Mike Stites.
Here.
Joe Demott.
Here.
Karen Adams.
Here.
And Karen Berry.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the minutes of August 8th, 2011?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
The motion for approval of the minutes, seconded by Councilmember Demott. Any changes to the minutes? Please poll the council.
Motion carries eight to zero.
Thank you. We have two proclamations tonight. We have a September 11th anniversary proclamation and a pro-challenge proclamation. I would ask that Mrs. Wheatridge, Karen Thaler, please step forward to read the proclamations.
Thank you, Mayor DiTullio. City Council, citizens of Wheatridge, good evening. Whereas on September 11th, 2001, 2,977 innocent victims perished in the unthinkable terrorist attacks on the United States of America, bringing tragedy, destruction, pain, and loss across our nation. And whereas we will not forget the events of that terrible morning, no will we forget how Americans responded at the Twin Towers in New York City, at the Pentagon, and in the skies over Pennsylvania with heroism, selflessness, compassion, courage, and with prayer and hope. And whereas through the heroic sacrifices made by firefighters, rescue and law enforcement personnel, military service members, and other citizens, the nation stood as one people, united in our common humanity, grief, and shared sorrow. And whereas the heroic stories of the first responders who gave their all to save others strengthened our resolve, and Americans found unity, healing, focus, and strength, and emerged a stronger nation renewed by a spirit of national pride and a true love of country. And whereas we will always remember our collective obligation to ensure that justice is done, that freedom prevails, and that the principles upon which our nation was founded endure. Now therefore be it resolved that the mayor and city council of Wheatridge do hereby proclaim the day of September 11th, 2011, as day of service and remembrance, and all join in honor in the lives lost, the heroes who responded, and the men and women in uniform who continue to protect our country at home and abroad. And salute the heroes of 9/11, recapture the spirit of unity and compassion that inspired our nation following the attacks, and rededicate ourselves to sustain service to our community and witness thereof on this 22nd day of August 2011.
Thank you. Since we have our meeting on September 12th, I would ask that we have a moan of silence for all the victims of September 11th.
Whereas the USA Pro Cycling Challenge will bring together the world's top professional riders to compete in the most demanding bike race ever held on American soil. And whereas the event is billed as the largest spectator event in Colorado's history, and is expected to bring as many as 1 million fans to view the race from August 22nd through the 28th, 2011. And whereas the race will be traversing Wheatridge during the final stage from Golden to Denver. And whereas we want to showcase Wheatridge's beautiful tree canopy, open space, and nationally-recognized Clear Creek Trail. Therefore, I, Mayor Jerry DiTullio, and the city council, welcome the USA Pro Cycling Challenge to Wheatridge. In recognition of this great race, I hereby declare August 28th, 2011, as USA Pro Cycling Day in the city of Wheatridge, done and resolved this 22nd day of August 2011.
Thank you. So we have a great ceremony tonight. I'll ask Chief Brennan to please step forward. We have the national accreditation presentation for our police department. We've been working on this since 2005 when our chief was first hired. So congratulations. And Chief, you want to kick off the show with all of the different players?
Thanks, Mayor and City Council. I'd like to take the opportunity to introduce Chief Richard Myers from the Colorado Springs Police Department. Chief Myers is a commissioner on the board for the Commission on Accreditation for Law Enforcement. He's one of 21 commissioners internationally now that sits on that commission and reviews law enforcement accreditation. And then I'd also like to take the opportunity to introduce the department's accreditation team. This team of individuals was primarily responsible for getting this project done. It's one thing as a chief to have this vision and say, you know, I'd really like to do this, but it takes the men and women that are here to accomplish that. So if I could ask Chief Myers to step forward first, and he has a few words, and we'll do the official proclamation in regards to this, and then I've got some words in regards to the committee that did the work on this project. Thank you.
Mayor, council, it's an honor to be here on behalf of the Commission on Accreditation for Law Enforcement Agencies. Thank you for welcoming me to present the July 30th accreditation award to the Wheatridge Colorado Police Department. As Chief Brennan said, I'm Richard Myers, chief of the Colorado Springs Police Department, and one of 21 commissioners on the commission. Colorado is blessed actually to have two of the 21 commissioners. Arapahoe County Sheriff Grayson Robinson also serves on the commission. KLEA was created in 1979 when the founding organizations International Association of Chiefs of Police, the National Organization of Black Law Enforcement Executives, the National Sheriffs Association, and the Police Executive Research Forum recognized the need within the law enforcement community to develop professional standards to enhance the delivery of police services to the citizens throughout the communities they serve. Since its inception, KLEA has accredited agencies under standards developed by many of the best public safety practitioners and leaders of our time. These standards cover a wide range of administrative, operational, and logistical issues, and serve as a modern management model that provides the framework for recognizing professional excellence in public safety. KLEA remains the gold standard for public safety agencies. There is a KLEA difference, and only the best agencies are able to recognize success as an enrolled organization. The city of Wheatridge should be proud of their police department's accomplishment. The certificate we're about to present has broad symbolic meaning. It clearly represents the agency's willingness to change in order to effectively address contemporary public safety concerns. It represents a commitment to doing the right thing and doing it the right way. It represents adherence to a professional code. And lastly, it represents an ongoing dedication to ensuring the agency's resources are appropriately developed, effectively deployed, and constantly managed, all in the name of a safer community for workers, visitors, and the entire community. On April 30th through May 3rd of this year, two professional assessors from out of town visited the Wheatridge Police Department and reviewed the agency's files, activities, functional impacts, and management strategies. The assessors determined that the agency was in compliance with all applicable standards. The assessors described the agency as a professional organization that provides quality services. It's important to note that the agency personnel were supportive of the accreditation process and contributed to a positive assessment process. Public comments received during the assessment process indicated the agency is committed to community policing as a philosophy, and the agency focuses on training as a tool for continuous service improvement. The assessors made numerous contacts with community representatives ranging from judicial officials to victim services representatives. All comments received were very supportive of the agency's quest to receive KLEA accreditation. At the commission meeting held in Cincinnati on July 30th, the commissioners in a review committee reviewed the assessor's report, concurred with their findings, and presented the agency to the full commission where a unanimous vote to accredit was given. This is the Wheatridge Police Department's initial KLEA accreditation award. The initial attainment of accreditation status is an arduous process that reflects a serious commitment on all members of the agency. Before I present this certificate to Chief Dan Brennan, I would be remiss, as a fellow Colorado chief, if I didn't tell you what you probably already know. Chief Brennan, who I'm very proud to call a colleague and friend, is the immediate past president of the Colorado Association of Chiefs of Police. And he is highly regarded throughout not only Colorado, but the nation as a leader among leaders. And the fact that he was able to lead your department through this accreditation process while serving in the leadership role for CACP, I think reflects very highly of his exceptional skills. So I'd like to offer this congratulations to Chief Brennan and accreditation manager Commander Jim Lorenz and the entire Wheatridge Police Department. And Chief, if you and your team will join me?
I'd like just to introduce my team quickly. Commander Jim Lorenz, my administrative assistant, Cheryl Keller, Sergeant Lila Adams from Professional Standards, Lieutenant Dave Pickett, my record supervisor, Derry Pat, Lieutenant Mark Cooney from Patrol, and Sergeant JD Jepkama, who's now in Investigations. You know, I'm a little long-winded sometimes, and I just, I'm so damn proud of these men and women that if I could just take a moment just to talk about the work that they did, Mayor, because this was an arduous process, and it was a difficult one. I've got a commendation that I'd like to read and present to each of them for their work. In law enforcement, I've often heard police organizations describe themselves as being the best in their area, region, or nationally. And I always like to ask those agencies, or those chiefs, or officers from that agency, well, how do you prove you're one of the best? And the answer's obvious. You look for opportunities to benchmark your organization against a set of standards or best business practices. To provide effective and efficient policing services today, police departments must be accountable to and have the trust of the public. Accreditation ensures the Wheatridge Police Department has and utilizes the very best practices in providing law enforcement services to your community. In 2007, the Wheatridge Police Department took a very significant step towards becoming an exceptional organization providing exceptional service by beginning the self-assessment process to become a nationally-accredited law enforcement agency through the Commission on Accreditation of Law Enforcement Agencies. Bringing the Wheatridge Police Department into compliance with a body of internationally-recognized professional law enforcement standards was a daunting and difficult task. These standards provide our organization with a proven management model and blueprint that promotes the efficient use of resources and improvement of service delivery. Over the course of the last three and a half years, each of these members of this accreditation committee has worked diligently on moving the Wheatridge Police Department towards the goal of achieving national accreditation. In April of this year, a KLEA assessment team visited our department to review the standards, our standard files, interviewed employees, examined our processes, interviewed employees, and even held a public hearing. In their final report, the team leader spoke about the quality of services that this agency provides and the committed employees who provide those services. As Chief Myers noted, on July 30th of this year, the commission voted unanimously to approve the Wheatridge Police Department for advanced law enforcement accreditation. Only 11 of the 233 law enforcement agencies in Colorado, and only 682 nationally, are honored with this accreditation. As your police chief, I wanted to acknowledge each of the members of this committee personally for their commitment, perseverance, and professionalism in bringing this recognition to our organization. Their efforts modeled others what our vision, mission, and core values of the Wheatridge Police Department mean to the organization and the committee we serve. And as police chief, I thank them for a job well done. Thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations, and thank you for your hard work, to you and your team.
Thank you, Mayor, and Council.
That concludes our proclamations and ceremonies. The next item on the agenda is citizen's right to speak. This is for time for the public to speak on any item not on the agenda tonight, so please step forward if you have any item not on the agenda, and please spell your last name for the record, and your city, and your address. And this is different than the public input on the budget. This is any item not on the agenda.
Hi, my name is Genevieve Wooden, W-O-O-D-E-N. And I'm here on behalf of Wheatridge 2020. I'm a board member, and I just wanted to tell everyone about the home tour that we're having. Wheatridge 2020 will be hosting a mid-century and modern home tour on Saturday, September 24th, from 1:00 to 5:00 p.m. The tour will showcase several fantastic homes in the Wheatridge area with mid-century architecture and furnishings. We are currently looking for volunteers to help with the tour. Volunteers will be helping as hosts at the homes for a two-and-a-half-hour time slot. A volunteer will be standing in the home during their shift to help direct visitors and answer questions. Volunteers will receive a free ticket to the tour and an invitation to the after-tour party at Mod Mood on 44th Avenue. Please call Wheatridge 2020 at 720-259-1030 to sign up. There's also a website about this home tour, and that is turmodernwheatridge.com. Thank you.
Thank you. Please spell your last name for the record, and your city or your address.
Hello, my name is Jesse Hill, 2995 Chase Street in Wheatridge, Colorado. Good evening, citizens and Wheatridge City Council. I'd like to thank you all, especially the citizens in District 1 who nominated me for candidate for city council coming up in the upcoming election. I've accepted this and look forward to delivering some bold and new ideas for this great city. Please visit jessehill.com for more information about the future of Wheatridge. I'd also like to thank two wonderful entrepreneurs I met last Friday selling raspberries out on 38th Street. These young individuals were fortunate enough to be able to sell fresh fruits and vegetables, do some changes in our code without too much concern. If you see any other youngsters being businessmen and women, I encourage you to stop by and pick up a pint or two. So, thank you.
Could you spell your last name for the record?
Hill, H-I-L-L.
Thank you. Do we have anybody else for public comment?
Hi, my name is Ken Wig, and I'm in 4047 King Street in Denver.
Please spell your last name for the record.
Sure, I always have to do that because it's spelled W-I-I-G. Two I's, one G.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm here today representing the Second Wind Fund, which many of you may already be familiar with because every year we show up to talk about the Second Wind Fund and what we're doing here in your community. The Second Wind Fund is a teen suicide prevention program that started 10 years ago in Lakewood when there were four teens at Green Mountain High School who took their life in one year, one school year. And a couple of folks stepped up and decided they needed to make a change. Sorry, sure, thank you. And so they decided to put a walk together and raise some funds. Because as they looked around, and then they raised the money, and came back and said, well, looking for an organization they'd give money to, and realized there really wasn't one out there that was doing direct work with teens to make sure that we can stop this problem. And the problem is a major problem because suicide is the second-leading cause of death for young people in our community here in Colorado. And Colorado has the sixth-highest suicide rate in the country. But unfortunately, almost half of our kids don't have access to services because they're either uninsured or underinsured. So the program, the idea of the program is to provide counseling for those kids who don't have access to services. And to date, in that first day in Green Mountain, and we moved on to spread out to JFCO, and now around the Denver metro and around the state actually, and actually looking outside the state. But here in the Denver metro area, over 2,500 kids have been referred to the program at this point. And to the best of our knowledge, and we follow the kids as far as we can, the best number I'm going to give you is we haven't lost one kid. And so, but this, and so it's a two-pronged thing. One, it's got to be okay for kids to ask for help, for anybody really for that matter. So getting the message out that it's got, it's to remove some of the stigma surrounding the issue, and come forward and ask for help. And secondly, the help's got to be there. And as I said, half the kids really don't have access, and I think some of your officers can tell you that maybe some of the hardest things they do with is going on a call where there is either a completed suicide or an attempt. And for every single kid who actually completes suicide, there's six or seven who end up hospitalized. So the numbers are big. And we, at this point, have helped, I don't have the figures exactly, but let's just say dozens right here in Wheatridge. We have had referrals from every single high school in the Denver metro area, most middle schools, and too many even elementaries. Last two weeks ago, we had a referral for a five-year-old. Again, it's working, but in order to do that, we have another fundraiser coming up, September the 18th. That's what I've handed out here. I can leave some more in the back if anybody's interested. It's a 5K Music Fest, it's called, and that's the website, 5K Music. If you're interested in coming, but we got about, the first year, they had 66 people show up. This last year, over 3,000 people out there trying to make a difference and help the kids in this community. We have over 10 bands playing. It's like a big family barbecue. A lot of people have a lot of fun. And I encourage everyone else, and we have opportunities for, we do have the mayors, I know of Golden and Lakewood are going to be there speaking, and so it certainly encourages any and all of you to show up, and anybody else who can. So if there's any questions, there is the website on there, there are phone numbers on there, and the simple one to remember is 5kmusic.org. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have anybody else for citizen's right to speak? Seeing none, we'll move on to approval of the agenda. And by unanimous consent, does anyone on council have a problem if we add Resolution Number 26-2011 as item number five? So seeing none, we'll add Resolution Number 26-2011 as item number five. Item one is public input on the budget, so please step forward if you'd like to make any comments on the budget for 2012. And please spell your last name for the record.
Good evening, members of council and Mr. Mayor. My name is Ted Hyde. My last name is spelled H-E-Y-D. And my comments tonight are both mine as well as those of Molly Hanson, Livwell Wheatridge Coordinator, who is here tonight. And we want to start out by first recognizing and commending the city on some real great accomplishments demonstrating its commitment to expanding the city's bicycle and pedestrian network and access for the disabled. For example, the funding allocation in the 2011 CIP for completion of Phase 3.2 of the BikePed Master Plan, the Wadsworth Multi-Use Trail, it's currently under construction out front, the Kipling Multi-Use Path from 26th to 44th for which funding has been allocated, the improvements that have been out, for which funding has been allocated at 32nd and Youngfield, four great accomplishments that the city has made. All of these projects are going to greatly increase the city's multimodal network for all ages and abilities. It's really great. Looking ahead to the 2012 budget, we appreciate the challenge of balancing many competing interests when there is a very limited pool of resources. Times are lean, and return on investment is a critical consideration. So we are bearing that in mind as we make a recommendation tonight. With that, the final report completed for Phase 3.1 of the BikePed Master Plan, three cost scenarios were provided for improvement specifically on Pierce from 26th to 44th, which is a 1.5-mile section. The low-end cost scenario would include restriping with bike lanes on both sides of the street, and the most current cost estimate for that, which is a fully loaded cost, is $82,000. Given the budgetary constraints faced by the city, I think we all get real sticker shock when we hear that number. In light of this, we propose a partial scenario, we recommend a partial scenario, striping new bike lanes on Pierce from 32nd to 38th, which instead of that 1.5-mile segment would be a .5-mile segment, or an abbreviated segment. In the context of the 2012 budget, the estimated cost would be $27,000. Now, mind you, that doesn't include a potential offset that could occur if Livwell Wheatridge, for example, were to obtain grant funding for a portion of that cost, thereby lowering the city's overall cost. So why do we support this, partial improvement on Pierce? Well, it's a stated priority in both the city's comprehensive plan as well as the BikePed Master Plan. These improvements, secondly, would really support the ongoing revitalization of the 38th Avenue corridor. It would have provided an enhanced connection specifically to the Main Street sub-district, which is emerging as part of the plan. The bike lane at this location on Pierce would feed directly into the eastern side of the Main Street sub-district. Something that we heard again and again as stakeholders and staff on these committees as part of this process was that we need more bodies on the corridor to patronize the businesses that we want to take hold there. In short, this bike lane on this section of Pierce would provide enhanced access to the corridor for hundreds of households. I just drove it tonight. It's literally hundreds of households if you consider a quarter-mile distance with access to the bike corridor. I just think if we can say to developers that X number of households are within a quarter-mile of a designated bike lane, I think that would be a notable incentive in terms of potential patrons to their businesses. A few more thoughts. One of the leading questions that emerged in the corridor planning process was, is there connectivity with adjacent uses? I heard it from both elected officials. I heard it from residents of the community. Further, strengthening connections to surrounding neighborhoods is one of the guiding principles of the plan development. And strengthening connections to non-vehicular networks was another guiding principle. So next, and in closing, we would like to offer our support for funds in the 2012 budget that would allow for implementation to move forward on the 38th Avenue corridor plan overall. More specifically, we support funding for several of the prospective improvements that have been identified for Phase 1 of this plan. These include restriping on the Main Street sub-district as well as the residential sub-district, the retrofit amenity zones and the café zones, curb consolidations, as well as retrofit planners. As always, Livwell Wheatridge is open to discussing how we can assist the city with a obtaining potential outside funding sources to support these improvements. But looking at Pierce as well as the overall 38th Ave corridor plan, we very much appreciate your consideration, and thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hi. I'm Janice Hoppe, H-O-P-P-E. I'm owner of Compass Construction.
Thank you. We've got tall people and not-so-tall people over there.
Oh, I ruined it. There we go. Thank you, City Council, Mr. Mayor, and city staff for giving me the opportunity to come and comment on the upcoming budget process. We at Compass Construction truly appreciate all the community support that we've had over the last year while we were rehabbing our building at 718 West 38th Avenue. What was once the black eye on 38th Avenue is now a beautiful, if I don't say so myself, building that's now housing three growing businesses. We have Kyra Yoga, EJ Architecture, and Compass Construction. There are things that the city of Wheat Ridge can continue to do to support in order to keep attracting new businesses and help established businesses grow. I'm asking the city to continue to support programs that are working towards the vision of a vibrant community in Wheat Ridge, Wheat Ridge 2020, Wheat Ridge Business District, and the organization's supporting revitalization of Wheat Ridge. For those of you who don't know our story of how Compass Construction found its way to Wheat Ridge, I'll keep it short. And why I think Wheat Ridge 2020 and Wheat Ridge Business District are important, and why they're important to us, is a little over a year ago, we were looking to move from our small office in Denver in the Highlands area. We were rapidly outgrowing it. We looked in several places in Denver. Nothing really caught our eye until we saw the building on 38th Avenue. Not really knowing much about Wheat Ridge, we started doing some research and asking around, and we were asking our real estate agents at Green Door Living about what they knew about Wheat Ridge. They had just attended an outreach, like an outreach event that Wheat Ridge 2020 had put together, and Christian gave me Britta's phone number. And I set up an appointment with Britta and went and met with her. We discussed the city's commitment to revitalization, the work that Wheat Ridge 2020 was doing, and the Wheat Ridge Business District. I would say that she's a grand ambassador for all. Britta also explained the loan and grant opportunities that Wheat Ridge 2020 and Wheat Ridge Business District had, and to me, that was examples of the city putting their money where their mouth was. She also helped set up a meeting with the city staff and the planning building department so that we could all be on the same page and we could share our vision for the property. I can honestly say, without the connection to Wheat Ridge 2020, we may not have had the desire to take on what was the ugliest building on 38th Avenue at that point. In meeting with Wheat Ridge 2020, we learned about the movement for change and revitalization of Wheat Ridge. We learned about all of the different entities supporting this movement and growth. We learned about the financial support the city was giving via the Wheat Ridge 2020 loan programs and the Wheat Ridge Business District grants. We were able to have a meeting with the city staff, which I don't know that we would have been able to pull together ourselves, and we felt confident to move forward and become a part of this community and a part of this movement. I feel that the role that Wheat Ridge 2020 plays in the revitalization of Wheat Ridge is imperative, and that's why I choose to spend my time and volunteer my time on the Board of Directors with the Wheat Ridge 2020, and that's why I accepted the invitation to be on the Board of Directors for the Wheat Ridge Business District. I feel like the revitalization of Wheat Ridge is not a sprint, it's a relay race, and it takes teamwork, and it takes other people to carry the baton. That's why I've chosen to spend my time with those different Boards of Directors. While considering the next budget, I'm asking the city to fund Wheat Ridge 2020's loan programs, their work on the 38th Avenue implementation, and the programs and events of Wheat Ridge 2020 that continue outreach and branding that show the vision of a better Wheat Ridge and reach more businesses like myself to join us on 38th Avenue and 44th Avenue. We look forward to growing our roots in Wheat Ridge. Hopefully, I'll sell my house and move here soon, and thank you for your time and consideration to this matter.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Genevieve Wooden, last name is W-O-O-D-E-N, and I live at 4095 Dudley Street. Thank you, elected officials and city staff, for this opportunity to give input on the upcoming budget. I am a licensed Realtor and have been doing residential real estate projects in the Wheat Ridge area for the past 18 years. With this experience and as a resident and a parent, there are several investments that I think are important as you make your budget decisions. As you heard from me earlier tonight, Wheat Ridge has some amazing and wonderful homes. At the same time, we have many in our city that need updating and improvement. I applaud the city of Wheat Ridge for realizing that we did have a reputation problem with our building permit process and that making improvements in the building permit process and the building department have occurred. Please keep improving this and helping ensure that more people want and are able to easily make investments and improvements to their properties. At the same time, I would like to applaud the work of Wheat Ridge 2020 with the Neighborhood Stabilization Program, working to fix up foreclosed properties and stabilize neighborhoods. As a Wheat Ridge 2020 board member, I'm excited to see the good work the organization has done, and I hope the city will support them in any way that you can. As a resident, I'm very happy to be part of Wheat Ridge 2020 and see the many strides the city is taking to make this a more inviting community. Specifically, I'm excited about the 38th Avenue corridor plan and the concepts that will help make the street pedestrian-friendly and safer for car traffic. I want to shop and spend more time there and shops and cafés and any other businesses that we can attract to that area. Please support the implementation of the 38th Avenue plan. I'm also very excited by the pedestrian and improved sidewalk plan for Wadsworth. I think it's great. I think it's nice to know that I can send my kids out to walk or bike in further areas around the city, so I'm very thankful for that. Making the city safer and appealing is very useful to me and hopefully will draw more citizens to Wheat Ridge. As you budget, please be sure to include dollars for implementing these plans and to support the movement of Wheat Ridge 2020. Other events like the Realtor Tour, the Home Tour, the Mid-Century and Modern Home Tour, and Live Local Wheat Ridge, these events all continue the enthusiasm for what's happening in our community, and that's a very positive thing for Wheat Ridge. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Jesse Hill, H-I-L-L. I live in Wheat Ridge at 2995 Chase Street. I'd like to show my support for the capital improvements that are going on within the city of Wheat Ridge and District 1, fixing and maintaining the roads and sidewalks in our community. I hope the future budgets continue to show support for these capital improvements are the first thing that existing and are new and our next generation of citizens will see when entering our community. Budgeting for these investments, just like our founding fathers and mothers, will provide for a vibrant future of Wheat Ridge. It is our responsibility to fund these, to fund these and fixing, say, the patchwork of sidewalks that we have through our community, and also to maintain the roads. But I also would like to ask you to do it in a sustainable way, in a way that we, as Wheat Ridge, are responsible for doing that. As we know, there's not, you know, extra money or funds from the federal level to go do this. Asking for more of it is only going to contribute to the troubles they're having there in Washington. So when we look forward, let's try not to plan on ending up with more debt. So other than that, I'd like to thank you all, and please support the capital improvements here in Wheat Ridge.
Thank you. Do we have anybody else here on public input on the budget?
I just wanted to pass the gavel real quick and make a few comments about the budget since I'm a citizen of Wheat Ridge and also the mayor. What I wanted to recommend to council, as you go through this budget process, I've talked to a few members of council, and I wanted to recommend that when it comes to brick-and-mortar projects and Wheat Ridge 2020 and even the Business District, I would recommend that we fully fund Wheat Ridge 2020 as it was decided in the beginning with some meaningful brick-and-mortar projects that were dedicated in a certain area of the city where they had the resources and the time and the ability to do those projects in partnership with the city, like a public works project and a housing project similar to like the southeast corner of District 1, or any other area in the city that needs housing rehab and public works rehab, rather than this sort of this piecemeal funding that's going on where the original investment that 2020 received, they were able to invest in the community, that money came back into their coffers, but because of funding, they'd have to use that money now for operations rather than actually putting it back into the community like other organizations. So my only recommendation to council would be, and talking to Mr. Reinhardt and a few other council members, is find a project that 2020 could work on in a brick-and-mortar type of situation where it comes to residential housing in conjunction with the city, and use that 40% reserve that we have for brick-and-mortar type projects where the housing and the public infrastructure is being done at one time to show that the city is serious about reinvestment and redevelopment within the city of Wheat Ridge. And we had the mayor's reception down at the Richards Heart Estate, which is an area right adjacent to the Highlands. There's a small shopette in that area. You have also houses that either could be rehabbed and expanded and enlarged like the NRS calls for, or if the Wheat Ridge 2020 or another organization had the ability to buy the property with a willing seller and scrape and build some new housing in the city, that's where we need to be. You know, really, whether you agree with the look and feel of the property at 32nd and Pierce, the duplex, it really isn't important how you feel about it, is the fact of the matter is, at 32nd and Pierce, you have new stakeholders in the community and new residential property in the community, and it's looking really nice at that corner. And those folks bought, and they're living in the city of Wheat Ridge, and they're maintaining their property. So the idea is, we need stakeholders back into the community and get back to what our mission was, which was looking at the demographics, improving the housing stock, and in the meantime, with the city as a partner, doing the public work and infrastructure like drainage and curb gutter and sidewalks in areas that needed it. So that's my recommendation to the city council would be to look at 2020 and the Housing Authority and the Business District and either fund these organizations and support them and let them move forward and give them direction if they need direction, or cut it loose because we need to get that, our best bang for our buck. So that's what I like to say about public input on the budget. Do we have anybody else who'd like to comment from the public before we move on? Seeing none, we'll move on to public hearings and ordinances on second reading. Item two is Council Bill 26-2011. I'm going to open the public hearing. Councilmember Stites?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to introduce Council Bill Number 26-2011, an ordinance submitting a proposed amendment to the Wheat Ridge Home Rule Charter to the voters of the city pursuant to Charter Section 16.8B, setting the ballot title and giving notice and call of an election concerning the same. The city attorney's office recently advised that the Charter Section 15.6A, which requires an election prior to the awarding of any franchise in the city, would be in violation of federal laws as it relates to cable franchises. Specifically, the concern was that requiring an election prior to the awarding of a cable franchise might violate the Federal Cable Act. Following a council study session on the issue, the council decided to initiate a charter amendment pursuant to Charter Section 16.8B. The proposed amendment to Charter Section 15.6A does not conflict with federal law by specifically exempting cable franchises from the election requirement.
Would the city clerk please assign an ordinance number?
Yes, to Council Bill 26-2011, we will assign ordinance number 1498.
Now, thank you. Is there any other presentation besides the executive summary from staff?
No, we think the executive summary is pretty complete, so we'll stick with that unless you have questions.
Do we have anybody here from the public to speak on item number two? Does council have any discussion or questions on item number two? I want to close the public hearing and a motion's in order.
I move to approve Council Bill Number 26-2011, an ordinance submitting a proposed amendment to the Wheat Ridge Home Rule Charter to the voters of the city pursuant to Charter Section 16.8B, setting the ballot title and giving notice and call of an election concerning the same on second reading, and that it will take effect immediately upon adoption.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion for approval of item two, was seconded by Councilmember Reinhardt. Any discussion on the main motion? Please poll the council.
Motion carries eight to zero.
Now, thank you. Next item on the agenda is decisions, resolutions, and motions. Item three is Resolution 25-2011. Councilmember Saint?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Resolution Number 25-2011, a resolution amending the fiscal year 2011 general fund budget to reflect the approval of a supplemental budget appropriation in the amount of $15,000 for the replacement of the audio/video communication system in the municipal court. The current audio/video communication system located in the courtroom has become unreliable, resulting in frequent inoperability and loss of court time. Inoperability may also impact prisoner detention days. The system is used multiple times per week to handle eligible prisoner matters via audio/video conference between the City of Wheat Ridge Municipal Court or Edgewater Municipal Court and Jefferson County Detention Facility. An audio/video communication system has been in use for years and is an essential component of court operations. Is the motion in order?
Motion's in order.
I move to approve Resolution Number 25-2011, a resolution amending the fiscal year 2011 general fund budget to reflect the approval of a supplemental budget appropriation in the amount of $15,000 for the replacement of the audio/video, audio/video communication system in the Wheat Ridge Municipal Court.
Sir? We have a motion for approval of item three, seconded by Councilmember Jay, I believe. Please poll the council.
Motion carries eight to zero.
Now, thank you. Item four, Councilmember Langworthy?
Thank you. A motion to approve payment to Murray Dahl Keegan Meister &amp; Renaud LLP, July 2011 invoices for legal services in the amount of $17,836.63. Motion in order?
Motion's in order.
I move to approve payment of the July 2011 invoices for legal services in the amount of $17,836.63 payable to Murray Dahl Keegan Meister &amp; Renaud LLP.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion for approval, seconded by Councilmember Stites. Please poll the council.
Motion carries eight to zero.
Item five is Resolution Number 26-2011. Councilmember Berry?
Thank you. Resolution 26-2011, a resolution supporting the Denver Regional Council of Governments' comprehensive joint application to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development Sustainable Communities Regional Planning Grant Program. Last year, on behalf of 62 public and private partners, Dr. Cog applied for a $5 million grant in funding from the Sustainable Communities Regional Planning Grant Program. Although the application was not successful, it scored highly and earned the region preferred sustainability status, which gives the region a competitive advantage implying for the 2011 grant program. The grant program includes a valuable opportunity for our region and for the city of Wheat Ridge to leverage our investment in fast tracks and to build upon the success of Metrovision, the metro area's shared vision for the future that establishes a framework of coordinated land-use transportation and environmental planning across the region. Is the motion in order? I move to approve Resolution 26-2011, a resolution supporting the Dr. Cog application for the Sustainable Communities Regional Planning Grant.
Is there a second?
I second the motion.
We have a motion for approval of item number five, seconded by Councilmember Jay. Discussion on the main motion? Please poll the council.
Motion carries eight to zero.
Thank you. I believe that concludes our agenda for the evening. We'll move on to city managers' matters.
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to thank the Carnation Festival Committee and city staff who all participated in the planning of the Carnation Festival. I think it was a great success once again. And also, pleased to announce that we do have a new business opening on 38th Avenue, Sabiché Peruvian Restaurant at 7,000 West 38th Avenue, opened last week, so go try them out. The construction of the city's new dog park will start here this month, anticipated to be completed early September. That is at the Fruitdale Park, so we're excited about that. And I'm also very excited to announce that one of our employees, Sergeant Paula Beloffis, was recently elected to the National Association of Women Law Enforcement Executives Board of Directors. Now Lee, Now Lee is what it's called, is in an association of female officers that addresses the unique needs of women who hold supervisory and management positions in law enforcement. So I'm always very proud of employees who go that extra mile to expand out of their roles and represent the city on a roles and represent the city on a national basis. So congratulations to Paula. Thank you.
Thank you. City attorneys' matters?
Not tonight, thanks.
City clerks' matters?
I just want to commend our police department. I know you guys will have the same commendations, but I'm proud of a police department, I think, that is responsive to the community and makes the community feel as safe as this one does for ours. I appreciate the openness our police department has to feedback, to concerns throughout the community, and the creativity that we see from all the police staff in the programming they've put together for our city. So just a big commendation to all of you, and thank you.
Thank you. I also wanted to congratulate Chief Brendan and the entire police department on their national accreditation. I know you mentioned you wanted to accomplish this in 2005, and about five and a half years later, you did it. So congratulations to all of our officers, and they were doing a great job at the Carnation Festival over the weekend. We had a good presence down at the parks, and I saw them doing their job very well. And I also wanted to remind everybody that in September is National, or is Traffic Safety Month, and that the police department will be out looking for people running red lights at major intersections or turning left on red lights. California stops where they're not stopping at stop signs. So please be aware that our police department is out enforcing the codes for dangerous driving on red lights and stoplights. And in talking with Sergeant Wordell at one of our top-of-the-hour filmings at 38th and Wadsworth, he indicated that of all the speeding tickets or all the traffic violations that the city of Wheat Ridge writes in a given month or a given year, about twenty-five percent of those tickets are to Wheat Ridge residents, which, like I mentioned before, anecdotally, if you have a hundred people on your block, twenty-five people or twenty-five percent could be violating the street and speeding on neighborhoods. So please don't speed in neighborhoods. The majority of the speeding is done in certain areas by residents, and our speeding limit is twenty-five or thirty miles per hour in residential areas, and the police department will be watching that. School started today, so the police will be out enforcing the speedy limits in school zones. So I wanted to thank the chief for that work, and the school resource officers are at all of the schools now. Chief, is that true? Both middle schools have a school resource officer? Oh, could you?
Both middle schools and the high school, and then they share the elementary schools and the private schools.
Good. So we have a great presence of the police department at our middle schools and the high schools. So I also wanted to congratulate the Carnation Festival Committee. They did a great job this weekend. We had fireworks both nights. It was a great performance. Had a lot of people down watching the bands. The Bottom Feeders, which was the local band that played at the mayor's reception, they also played Friday night at five o'clock, so they're great. They live in Wheat Ridge, and they're a good asset to our city, supporting the arts and culture. And with that, I'll turn it over to Councilmember Berry.
Thank you. I just want to echo what the city clerk, Michael Snow, said about the police department. Thanks for all your hard work, and congratulations to Sergeant Beloffis. And again, I'd like to also thank the Carnation Festival Committee, especially the chair, Senators Sherri Jean and Margie Seifer, for all their work they've put in. And there were just hundreds of volunteers who put in quite a bit of work, and it was a great time, and I really enjoyed the festival, and I enjoyed seeing the new street sweeper out there cleaning up after the Western airs and much more efficient, and it was all polished and shiny, and appreciated seeing that out there.
Mr. Reinhardt?
Yeah, I'd like to remind everyone that unfortunately, competing with the Second Wind's race on September 18th, the same time as the Farmers 5,000, celebrating its thirtieth anniversary, is a fundraising exercise for the high school, and some of us will be participating. I urge anyone else to be participating. And related thing, the kids are back in school, and anything we can do to support them and the school system, I think we need to look for opportunities to be helpful within the schools. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Adams?
There you go. Maybe, Mr. Mayor, you could clarify. I believe there's a coordination with the race at the Second Wind and the Farmers. I think a real runner can do both, right? I think the ones in the morning and ones in the afternoon.
Wheat Ridge is in the morning, so...
Yeah, ours is in the morning. Our Wheat Ridge is in the morning, see? And then, Davis, you, since you're the big runner here, can just run right over to the Second Wind and run in the afternoon, right? There you go.
Well, it says here that you have to be able to go again at eleven o'clock, and maybe our city attorney could maybe do a nine and an eleven, but I'm not quite in that category. If I read their brochure properly.
They try really hard not to conflict, so hopefully our runners can do both. But I also want to commend our police department. I followed that process pretty closely myself. I also testified that evening, and I also had great thoughts when they were in Cincinnati receiving the award. I am extremely, extremely proud and pleased and know that it was an arduous process. So I want to thank not just the chief, but the entire team. And I think that's part of our successes here, is that there isn't one person, and Dan says that over and over, that it's not just Dan, but it's his team, and I thank you for that.
Ms. Stites?
I also would like to congratulate the police department on their success, and having been part of this city for almost thirty years, it doesn't surprise me. They've always been up to snuff and a great police department, so congratulations.
Mr. Demont?
I also want to commend the police department and the Carnation Festival staff. Across the street from that festival for a lot of years, and I'd have to say that this year was, Saturday was the most people I've ever seen in that neighborhood, ever. It was crazy. Those people were out there. The staff was out there at seven o'clock in the morning Friday. Saturday night, I know I left my parking lot at 1:30 a.m., and there was at least three dozen people still across the street working. Public Works was out there, the police were still out there, the staff was still out there, and I came to work the next morning, and the park was clean, the streets were cleaned, and everybody did an incredible job. You know, and judging from the size, you know, I know we had some rain on Friday, and that may have dampened it, but Saturday was, there were droves of people over there, and they held it together and did a great job. I think the best ever. So I wanted to say thanks.
Thanks. Ms. Jay?
Of course, I'm very proud of our police department, and I'm sure our citizens will be too, as they realize what this means. This is quite an honor, and I'm very, very proud of you all. Carnation Festival was a remarkable success, and my thanks to Sherri Jean and Margie Seifer and Millie Nadler, who worked themselves to death, as well as Ann Al. I mean, there were so many people who really put their heart and soul in it. It was also our first green Carnation Festival, which is kind of neat. We had recyclable plates and cups, and I believe even compostable, wasn't that? Yeah, so that was a new wrinkle for us, very successful. And one other thing, this is obviously, we're all getting ready for an election, and there's going to be folks out there, like Jesse, and various people out there be pounding on your doors and wanting to talk to you. Give them a few minutes, because they're serious about running for election and helping our city, and you'll be more informed and ready to go come the time to vote if you've taken just that few minutes and opened that door and talked to those people who are going to be pounding on them. Thanks.
Mr. Stites?
Yeah, I too would like to congratulate the police department on the work. I know that was a tremendous amount of work, and I think the city is extremely lucky to have you as a police chief. I think you have brought accreditation to the police department by yourself, and I think that trickles down to every one of your officers on the force, and they are very professional. And I think Wheat Ridge should be proud, very proud, of their police department. I too would like to thank the festival. I know firsthand that's a lot of work putting one of those on, and I think they've done a great job this year. Please try to do a positive thing either at home. Once again, I got a hammer yawn to weeds. The weeds are popping up. So a positive thing was help your neighbors. You know, if they can't get out, help them. You know, it won't take that long, and we got to keep the city spruced up. Be a great time to relocate either your home or business to Wheat Ridge. If you need any help, see one of us, or Patrick would be very glad to help you. And as always, please try to find it and buy it in Wheat Ridge. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Langworthy?
I'd like to be the last one, so I know you've heard it seven other times, but I do feel that all the work you've done just goes to prove why Wheat Ridge is a better city now. Because the employees, they care, and even if you have to be stopped by one, I haven't thankfully, but if you happen to be, you know, it's good to know that they're going to treat you equally. It's not, you know, you're going to be treated, you know, by a professional individual who's going to care enough to, you know, make sure that you're safe and the people around you are safe. So that, to me, is fantastic. And the Carnation Festival was wonderful. The parade had a ton of people, and my daughter and I watched the fireworks, and it was fantastic. So thank you to everyone who put that on.
Thank you. We're going to adjourn into a study session. We'll take about a ten-minute break, so we're adjourned. We'll come back about 8:10.